Right now on the website, so give me just a second and I'll have it, I'll have it on there.
We've got a quorum.
It is, it is recording, so we're okay there.
I've got the live link right now on the website, so give me just a second and I'll have it, I'll have it on there.
Share, embed, copy. Okay, we are live on the website. Ms. Judy, can you hear us okay?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Good.
Is that good?
Yeah.
You've got signs on the switch at my foot.
Let's see, we got Kelly with us.
Yeah, I had to go change shirts real quick.
Waiting for Susan, that's it.
She's here.
Susan is, oh, you're talking about?
Who's a Mackie?
We got two.
Oh, yeah, that's right, I forget.
Linda's having a couple of issues with her audio, so she's gonna be joining us by phone, that's who I just got the phone with, so we're getting her corrected as well.
Okay, who's Justin Jarvis?
Justin Jarvis is with Enterprise, he's, he's gonna be helping me explain Enterprise fleet package that's on the agenda. Can you hear us now, Linda?
Yes.
Perfect.
So her and Johnny are both having issues with their, their setups?
Hers just sounds, Linda sounds like it's a permissions issue for Susan, it's not letting her.
Right, they're Johnny there, so. Ready to get started?
Uh, we're ready whenever you are, sir, unless you wanna wait for Susan or, uh, who else are we missing?
Well, we're missing Marion, but Marion is not gonna be able to participate today. So I'm gonna go ahead and call the work session for May 5th, 2020 to order. Some members of the city council may participate via telephone or video conference, a quorum may or may not be physically present in the city council chambers. Texas government code 551 point 127 A2. Citizens wishing to make comments should email m parks at everman tx.net. Citizens' comments received prior to the meetings adjourned will be read to the council. To view this meeting on live stream due to the COVID-19, please refer to everman tx.us backslash city council live stream. And to make any comments for citizens' comments or the public hearing, please call 817-203-3239, or send them via email at m parks@everman tx.net during the meeting. So we'll go to discussion items, item one is the enterprise leasing phase two for the police department vehicles.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Okay, now I can.
Perfect, good evening, everybody, I've invited Justin Jarvis, he is our representative with Enterprise, who's been working very closely with us through the last year or over the last year to acquire all of our public works vehicles and police vehicles. If you recall, we had Nick from Enterprise come out last year prior to budget and make the presentation on the vehicles and how the fleet program would work, and that the police department would be occurring over a five-year period essentially, and that every year we would be acquiring more police vehicles each year. One of the problems that we ran into, there's Susan, one of the problems that we ran into this last year was due to the GM strike, we had a delay, and that delay caused us to not be able to obtain these vehicles until several months later, we just got many of our police vehicles within the last month. So I've asked Justin here, he's, he's gonna kinda talk to you a little bit about how this process works and some of the numbers, so just I'll kinda just turn it over to you, or if you have any comments to add.
Yeah, so, good evening, everyone, basically what we've kinda, Chief and I have worked together to get a plan to get ahead of this. In lieu of 2021 replacements, we're looking at taking some 2020s that are in dealer stock today to get those upfitted so that we don't run into any delays again like we did last year in regards to that. We came up with, we're sticking to the same plan that Nick rolled out with three additional replacements, that's what the initial plan was as well, and we're still going with the same models, and then all of the quotes are in line and price point with exactly what we had from the, what we had signed for fiscal year 2020. From a number standpoint, Chief, did you need me to go through the quotes?
If you happen to have those handy, that would be good.
Let me see really quickly.
One of the things that we're working with Justin on right now is we've gotten some quotes and estimates from a separate upfitter and to, to help get these police vehicles done a little quicker. We're working with him now to find out the finalized price, the initial prices that came in from those, from that upfitter seemed a little higher than what we had anticipated, so still within what the budget allowed, however, we feel that those numbers should be a little lower, so I wouldn't be surprised if a couple weeks from now, when, or next month, when we go to present the final numbers to you, if they actually come in lower than what Justin's about to present to you here.
Yeah, so I can go ahead and share my screen with you guys and go through kinda the initial plan. So if you look here, this is what we put in place for you guys, you currently have year one, we did all six, we haven't been able to sell these vehicles yet, so we don't know what the equity position looks like from the six vehicles that we're selling that were replaced. So we'll get that finalized hopefully in the next couple of weeks. Year two, it shows here that you'll have nine lease vehicles in total for the PD side, that's the three that Chief and I have already been working to build together, and equity in those, we'll, we'll get market values on that, so we can anticipate what we'll get from that. Your accrued annual payment will be in line with what we initially proposed to you all, and in the upfront aftermarket, basically on each vehicle is roughly a little over $10,000 for that, and that's also in line, and what I'll show you really quickly is the quotes that Chief mentioned. So for patrol, and I know it's, it's kind of a lot, I'll kinda walk through it step by step. There will be two of these vehicles, they're gonna be on five-year terms. The, after all of the upfitting and everything's done, the capitalized price is gonna start at $54,775. Now, the cap price reduction, that's essentially that upfront down payment on the aftermarket of the vehicles, so for those two, that'll be $10,500, leaving your capitalized amount of the vehicle at $44,000. So your monthly lease payment on these is gonna be 838, so as far as the budget is concerned, the only two numbers that you'll see that will be affected will be this $10,580 here, which is an upfront expense, and then your 838.79 times 12 months over the year. The admin Tahoe is very similar to this, there's only one of these price point here, same basic understanding of it is $55,000 there, and then you have upfront cost on the aftermarket and your monthly lease payment here. Is there any questions on any components of that?
No.
Okay.
So, I, I have a question, so we're leasing it for how long?
So the police vehicles will be leased on 60-month, 60-month term, so five years.
Okay, and how many police cars are we working, waiting for?
You currently have all six that were scheduled for year one, and then we're looking at adding three additional in year two of this coming fiscal year.
Okay, this is Mackie, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, I, I'm confused, you've got a Chevrolet 2020 Tahoe that we're looking at, and it says the total monthly rental excluding additional services is 840.85. And then on a previous screen, you had another vehicle with another 800-ish, yeah, 838.79. Are we paying $800 a month on one vehicle, or each vehicle?
For the, for the PD Tahos, yes, ma'am.
We're paying $800 a month for, on two separate vehicles, $1,600 a month on two cars. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, if, if, if you recall when we first presented this, the, the whole purpose behind this plan and going with the lease vehicles is that, yes, we do pay a monthly premium to Enterprise each month, but what we're doing that we've never done before is we're taking the value of the vehicles that we had previously, and we're selling those vehicles to get that equity and roll that equity back into the cost of these vehicles. So our net cash position should actually be better, even though we're spending this money now, our net cash position, yeah, perfect, our net cash position down there at the bottom should actually be better than where we were previously by buying these vehicles outright. It's actually cheaper for us in the raw, in the long run to be able to, to lease these vehicles and sell these vehicles and roll the, the value of these vehicles back into the next lease in the long run, so we're saving close to $192,000 a year otherwise if we were to purchase these vehicles outright.
And this includes maintenance as well, upkeep?
It includes some of the maintenance, if we have any major repairs, obviously, we, we run through a maintenance program with Enterprise, they kinda act as the middleman and assure that we're getting appropriate services for the costs that we're paying. But as far as just general PM, like our oil changes and that kinda stuff, they cover, we cover those costs. As far as like battery replacements, certain things that would be covered under warranty, all that is, is at no charge to us. We pay, Justin, correct me if I'm wrong, we pay $6 per month per vehicle for some of that general maintenance, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so how many vehicles, how many police vehicles are we gonna have?
Altogether, we have 11.
And all 11 are, no, we don't, are all 11 currently on Enterprise?
No, ma'am, currently only six of them are, are on Enterprise. This next year, this next year, we're hoping to get three more on the Enterprise rotation, which will give us nine, and then the following year we'll add one more, and then the following year after that we'll add one more.
Okay, I, you know, in the beginning, this sounded like a really good idea, but have we been spending all of this same amount of money on our vehicles? Because it seems like we've got brand-new vehicles, and all of a sudden, we've also got a really big monthly payment on all these really nice vehicles. I'm not begrudging the police department new vehicles, it feels like all of a sudden, we've got a massive amount of money going out that we haven't been spending in the past, and I'm seriously concerned about our, the fiscal health of this little town.
Well, no, and I, and I totally agree with you, and that's one of the reasons why we wanted to go with Enterprise, is because fiscally it is cheaper in the long run. Our vehicles, previously, we were only purchasing maybe two to three vehicles every couple of years for the police department, which meant that our vehicle age was, was significantly older, the average vehicle age, we currently still, we have a 2002 model sedan still on the streets that barely runs. One of the problems that we were seeing is that we were spending a significant amount of money on maintenance and repairs to some of our police vehicles based solely off the age. So one of the other areas that we're saving money in by, by doing the enterprise issue is that many of these vehicles will never even get out of warranty, if they do, it, it won't be out of warranty for very long, which minimizes our expenses within maintenance. We're able to maintain the equity of those vehicles better, they're worth a lot more when we go to roll it back in, and really, the bottom line is the, the equity after we have taken the cost of those vehicles and rolled it back into the purchase of new vehicles.
So you're saying, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
So you're saying that before Enterprise, I lost the name, Star Trek, you'd think I wouldn't forget Enterprise. So before Enterprise, we were spending a massive amount of money on maintenance and upkeep, and with the new vehicles that we're rolling in, I think I remember all this, I just need to hear it again, it's gonna, we're gonna be at the break even, but better.
With, with the white fleet, if you recall, we did, we did public works, which is called the white fleet, and we're also doing the police vehicles. The police vehicles that we're paying for are coming out of crime control district funds. Those crime control district funds cover these expenses, the white fleet essentially pays for itself because we roll those vehicles over almost every year. So the new trucks that you've, that you see on the streets right now, we're, we're looking at maybe November, December to roll those vehicles back in, so we'll take the value of that truck, and the other thing to, to think about, let me put it to you this way, when we go out as a government agency and Enterprise goes out for us and they acquire these vehicles, they're getting them at a discounted price from what you would normally purchase a vehicle, what you could go out and purchase a vehicle at. So they acquire this vehicle, let's say we acquire a truck at $40,000 rather than $50,000. We drive it for a year, the value of that vehicle has dropped from $50,000 to $40,000, we're able to resell that vehicle for $40,000, and we've practically had that truck for a year on our streets, serving the purposes we've needed to serve for nothing. So the white fleet is, is kinda the Cadillac and how all of this works, we're able to have public work vehicles at, at almost no cost to us, which frees us up to focus our CCD funds on police vehicles and have adequate police vehicles that are well-maintained, not 10 or 12 years old, that still have a value to them when we go to roll them back in and, and sell them. If you notice, if you look on the sheet here, one of the reasons year one, we're getting rid of six vehicles that are only worth, and they've estimated the worth at $26,800 in year one.
All six of them are worth 26.8?
Exactly.
I can speak for you, so he's kinda going in the right direction that we could talk through, so six vehicles were $26,800 in year one, three vehicles in year two, which is upcoming, are, we estimate are worth $39,000 collectively. In year three, one vehicle, $18,000, in year four, one vehicle, $16,000. So the goal for us, because it is an equity lease, which is traditional than what most people think, they think retail leases, you turn it in, you don't get anything, anything for it back, right? So because it's an equity lease, ideally, we'll get to a healthy life cycle, or we're replacing these every five years, so your, your equity per vehicle starts to look more like this 18, 16,000 times six vehicles, or three vehicles, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it does, okay, guys, thank you for your patience, I just needed to hear it again because it just looks like a massive amount of money going out for new vehicles, which are wonderful and we need them, but I, I needed to hear where the money was rolling, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, and, and the one thing to keep in mind is, is we're hoping that we'll get to the point where this is essentially self-sustained, and the police vehicles are funded solely by CCD funds every year, and the white fleet is essentially self-sustained by, just by the nature of the way Enterprise works.
Okay.
So we should see a dramatic drop in our, in our necessary capital expenditures when it comes to vehicles in the future.
Okay.
Okay, so have, have we received all of the white fleet?
I believe all but one, I think we're still waiting on the dump truck, is that correct, Justin?
That is correct.
Okay, and that dump truck is estimated to be here June 1st.
A dump truck?
Yes, ma'am, yeah, we have, we have a dump truck that we had before, but it's a, I think it's like a 1988 model truck barely runs.
Yes.
So this, this is the replacement for that.
Okay, what about the equipment that goes into the police vehicles? Where are we gonna get all that?
So that's what that upfront market cost is, what we tried, what we tried to do, and as you see, as the years go on, the upfront market cost drops. And, and the hope is, is we're gonna, we're gonna repurpose as much of the equipment inside of our vehicles as we possibly can, like our cameras, our radios, radar systems, we repurpose those from vehicle to vehicle as best as we possibly can for as long as we can. There will come the time where we'll have a camera system that can no longer be utilized, so that'll be an additional expenditure, but all of those are included in this price. What, what we do is we work with Justin to spec out the vehicles to include all the upfitting and equipment that goes on afterwards, and that's what that $10,000 cap price reduction is, we, we're paying for a portion of that, of that upfitting right then, and then the rest of it is rolled into the lease.
Okay, okay.
We have any other discussion on the enterprise leasing phase two for the police department?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Justin, for participating, and we will, go ahead.
I do have one update, and I, I think the chief was.
We lost, we lost you, Mr. Gunderson. Yeah, what happened?
No, I'm not, we lost him and me.
Chief is back.
Can you not hear me?
There we go, we can hear you now, sir.
Okay, I just wanted to say that one of the things that we're gonna need is a consensus on moving forward with the enterprise program so that we can start the process on three vehicles that we have identified for the program for October 1st. If we can get a jumpstart on that, we can, it can be ready to roll on the 1st of October. So I just wanna get a feel for everybody is comfortable with the program moving forward.
Yes, Mackie is.
Yes.
Yes.
Cause we will talk more about it in detail when we get into the budget conversation, but it would be nice to know today that everybody's on board and we're moving forward, and we can release Enterprise to get started on our three vehicles that we've identified.
Are you good with it, Johnny?
Yes.
Okay, we're all on board, so let's move forward, okay?
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you, boss, have a good evening.
Yes, well, goodbye.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to item two, it's gonna be an update on COVID-19, Chief Spencer.
Just kinda wanted to give you an update, I'm sure that you guys have seen the, the daily resituation reports, over the last week, we have seen a spike in cases. Those are just confirmed cases. We, we anticipated to see a spike solely because we've seen a lot of increase in testing, an increase in availability, so we, we've, we're not too caught off guard by this, and we're not, we don't believe that there's any reason to, to raise any alarm or cause any significant change in the way that we're currently operating. We'll continue to keep an eye on things and keep an eye on cases as we progress forward, but as of right now, the, the plan still remains the same. The drive-through is complete, they're just finalizing a couple of things with their cash register and making sure that they're set up to start taking payments through the drive-through, and City Hall still plans to open up on May 11th. So we haven't changed any plans, and we haven't changed any recommendations. As always, if you have any questions about the progress on, on COVID-19 or, or what we're doing, please don't hesitate to let me know, and I'll be happy to answer them.
Are the parks open?
I'm sorry, are the what open?
The parks.
So. Yes, they, they are open, but the basketball courts are still not open at my recommendation, and we probably won't look to open those until we see some type of significant change in the status of COVID-19. And that's simply because the basketball courts tend to attract people into a confined space, whereas the parks are wide open, so we're not discouraging anybody from visiting our parks right now.
Um, is, okay, with Tarrant County, I think, what was it, tennis and golf, the only thing that were, were available, is that the same here?
The only thing we're not letting people have access to right now is our splash pad and our basketball courts, that's the only thing we've, we have restricted access to. We're also not doing any rentals of the facilities, however, we're not preventing anybody from, from gathering on their own accord, however they see fit. We have somewhat had our hands tied by the governor's order, and we have to abide solely by that governor's order. Tarrant County or any municipality can't override the governor's order, so we're kinda following that to a T for the most part.
There was an issue that came up today at City Hall. It was a question by a citizen regarding garage sale. I don't see a big problem there, if everybody concurs in allowing people to do garage sale.
No, they're outside and people don't, you know, people don't fog around, you don't see 40 people around a garage sale normally. And it's outside.
Yeah, that's pretty much my general attitude as well, unless somebody has an issue with it.
Well, like our conversations have been, you know, people have to take some responsibility, and if you're not feeling well, stay home, it, you still follow the six-foot rule, and there's things in place to minimize your risk, so.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't take issue with it.
Well, what about estate sales, that's a little bit different.
The governor's order is pretty clear as to what is restricted, and he came out today with a new order that he does plan to allow the reopening of bars, hair salons within the next week to, to two weeks, I will get you those exact dates, but we cannot legally restrict anything more than what the governor's order is restricting. And he's pretty, he's pretty specific in his orders in that, that we. Um, and he's pretty, he's pretty specific in his orders in that, that we cannot, we can't go any, any further than what his order mandates. Um, I'll review that order just to make sure estate sales and garage sales, but I don't believe that we can restrict those right now.
So for restaurants, is it still just a limited, uh, number of people?
Yes, ma'am, they're allowed to. Yes, ma'am, that is correct. And our fire marshal has visited with all of our restaurants and all of our owners, and he has set that occupancy for them and informed them of what their twenty-five percent is. Um, we have really strived to be as supportive throughout this as, as we possibly can to all of our businesses. We want our businesses to be open. We just want them to, to do so safely. So we've, we've been as supportive as we can. We're not taking an enforcement stance on this as much as we've taken a, a seeking of compliance voluntarily, and what can we do to help?
We have any other discussion on the COVID nineteen?
Yes, so when will we be actually allowed to go back into the council chambers for meetings?
I, I think it's a little early to make a determination. Hopefully next month, Judy.
Okay.
But we're not gonna.
Remain at five thirty?
Well, the charter says six thirty, doesn't it?
Well, we, we actually have it set for six thirty. We would have to do a change. It just because this is kind of a special circumstance is why we've done it early. So we, we'll have to discuss that. If we want to change the time, I know, uh, Kelly has probably, he's had a hard enough time getting there at six thirty because of his work, so. Uh, but if council wants to discuss it, we can. But once we get back in chambers, currently it'll be at six thirty, which is our standard time, unless we decide to change it.
Yeah, because they're supposed to be putting our hours back to six o'clock here shortly, so.
Okay. We'll just play it by ear, so. It's right now, we just gotta wait and see what happens, you know? There's a big resurgence, resurgence of this stuff, then government, the governor and county could come, both come in and uh, extend it longer, so we're kind of at their mercy. So are we good with the COVID?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, let's move down to item three, community development block grant. It's CDBG funds, it's home investment partnership and emergency solutions grant. Uh, ESG entitlement funding through twenty twenty-three. And this is a, we got it through the county, and, uh, you know, periodically we have to approve continuing our, uh, enrollment, guess you could say with the county. Or we could pull out if we wanted to, but, uh, this is the money that pays for our water line replacements through the CDBG grants. And, uh, I don't know if I used any money last year out of the, uh, home investment partnership. I know they were looking for houses here, but there was nobody eligible that had applied, last I heard.
Another reason that this item is on the agenda is because next week we will include a public hearing uh, with the council meeting uh, to allow anyone to comment as we approve those funds for use of replacing some water lines. And I wanted to give you a heads up, we were originally supposed to vote on this in March, and then coronavirus kind of got in the way in it. We didn't have the vote, so we will be voting for the exact use of the CDBG funds.
Okay.
And we will have a public hearing to allow citizens comment on that vote.
What is this norm, normally for? For, uh, it says home investment partnerships, partnership.
That's the home program we approve every year, Johnny, and that's.
The one for sixty thousand dollars?
Yes, where we, they come in and they work on houses and we pay a portion of it.
Okay, so is it, is it two different things?
Well, yes, the, the CDBG is the money that's given to us by the county through HUD or it's from HUD through the county, and that's the money we've been using on water line replacements for the past several years.
Right, because that's, because it's normally being just the home and the, the, our investment partnership, correct with Tarrant County?
Well, I mean, it's the home program. It's, it's probably the same program, correct, Mindy?
Yes.
Why don't remember it being the community development, uh, block grant? Is that a new title?
Well, the, the community develop, that's what, that's where it comes from through Tarrant County, is the community development. So it's, it's always been referred to as the, the CDBG or Tarrant County, uh, the, um, my mind just went blank, the community development block grant. It's always been under that, so. That's, that's the government name for it, that, uh, goes to from HUD and comes to Tarrant County. And, uh, we get a portion of it, so.
Oh, okay, so did we not have anybody qualify for it this year?
But as far as I know, we did not. I don't know that we voted to, for any expenditures. I know the last phone call I got from the county was if we had anybody that might be eligible that, uh, please turn them on to the program. It, the problem is, we, the ones they did have, they're either in a floodplain or something of that nature, and they're not eligible for CDBG grant funds, or the, the home program, I should say. So because there is a set criteria they do have to meet to be eligible.
Okay, so that, when we agreed on it last year, I think it was, what, in August? That sixty thousand dollars, we just lost it?
Well, the, the money stays in our general fund unless we, they, they come up with a program, then they come up to the city and where they want, updates thirty percent, isn't it, Mr. Gunnerson?
Uh, I'm not sure of that percentage.
It, it, I think it's thirty percent, and then we pay it after they complete the house. If we didn't have any, uh, houses that were eligible, then that money is still sitting in the bank.
Okay, so now, is this the one where, um, uh, code, not code enforcement, but the other department refers the first people? Or they just automatically fill out an application to see if they qualify?
Well, anybody can fill it out. We usually keep brochures up here, uh, or they come back to Tarrant County to get brochures. Our code enforcement, if they're out there and they see somebody that's in need, and they can recommend that to the individuals to see if they qualify.
Well, I, I think if it's, I'm sorry, I think if it's still, if it's sixty thousand dollars there, I think we need to see if we can see if anybody's interested and qualified for it and get some assistance.
Well, let, let's get it voted on next week. You know, we would need to prove it before we move forward, so.
Uh, what we're, what we're gonna be voting on next week it are the funds that we've identified for the water line replacement. I'm unaware of any.
Well, part, part of it is too, though, we're voting to whether we stay, keep our membership with the home program and CDBG. We either have to stay on board or we need to send them documentation pulling out of both of those programs. And Mindy's got the contracts, so, um, so we'd, we'd have to vote on.
You can't do just one of those programs?
Uh, yeah, we can, but I think it's done every five years that we, I think it's every five years that we have to come in and sign the contract that we'll remain part of it or, or pull ourselves out of it. So I don't remember, it's been a little while since I've looked at the contract that, uh, but, uh, I'll make sure Mindy scans it and gets the contracts to you guys in your packets. It'll be emailed out to you for next week. And, uh, but it's the same thing we've been doing for years and years and years, so. You know, we definitely want the CDBG grant money coming in because it, that's free money for us. So. You know, if they don't give it to us, they're gonna give it to somebody else, so.
That's right.
Uh, you know, but the, the, as far as the home investment partnership or the home program, that's, that's one we've kind of gone back and forth on. I think there's been a couple of years we probably haven't done it, but, uh.
Well, I, I really don't think, uh, very many people know that it's available.
Well, Johnny, uh, you know, when they ask, if they, if somebody needs help and they come up and ask, we'll send them that direction, but you know, it, it's not the city's responsibility to go door to door and make sure.
I know, I know. I'm just saying that I don't think that the citizens are aware that it's available.
Well, I know there's been quite a few that have applied, but they, like I said, they don't meet the criteria too, and they've been denied.
Right.
So, uh, you know, there's a lot of factors come into play. You know, it's the monetary, you know, how much money they have, uh, uh, there, there's a lot of things come into play on that program, so. But, uh, it's, I will check with the county and get brochures for that. I'm sure they'll send them out after we do this, and then we can move forward with it, you know, with. You know, there's not much more we can do. It, I know Mindy's working on the website and maybe that's something we can put on the website.
Right now, I'm making a note right now to see if I can go ahead and put a link to, and a page for, for that.
Okay. All right, any other discussion on that?
No. No.
Okay, and let's drop down to number four, uh, drilling new water well.
Uh, as I told you, uh, in my weekly report, we are going to have to drill a new well in the near future. And we have been doing some investigation into the cost, the locations, and grant opportunities to help us get it done. Uh, I wanted to report to you that our engineer has submitted to me an estimate of the cost for drilling the well on Columbine site of one million, one hundred and five thousand dollars. Uh, if we were to put that well on any other site, that cost would be significantly higher because we would have to add the pump station and some other uh, hardware to get that well working, uh, pump station in that location. Again, I've got Lisa looking at grant opportunities, and depending on even at the Columbine well site, we're gonna have to acquire additional property to put that well in place. I think someone had mentioned to you that Hannah Ranch had offered some, uh, property to put a well. Uh, but that was in a floodplain. Our engineer informed us that that's not workable. So that's not gonna be a alternative for us. So we're looking at about a million one, probably at the Columbine site. Uh, and again, when I get more detail on all the pieces, we will submit a formal presentation to you.
How soon does it need to be done? How soon does it need to be done?
As soon as we can get it done. As you know, uh, we've got developers working on the Hannah Ranch site. And I've got a feeling they're gonna be ready to go before we are. I don't like our backup alternatives for water source for that development. Uh, we definitely do not want to use Fort Worth water, not just because of the cost, but because of the, um, the mixture of surface water and well, uh, groundwater is not a good combination. So we are moving as fast as we can to get all our ducks in a row, and we're probably looking at minimum six months before we can actually start working on it. And that's assuming we can get the financing in order and all the grant work done.
Do we qualify for any grants?
We are, at this time, looking into that very, uh, very thing. There are some out there.
I've got a question. Um, wait a minute, I got something singing over here. Um, I thought a long time ago that cities were prohibited from digging new wells. And they were gonna have to tap into the local water provider, which would have been Fort Worth. Um, has that gone away? I'm not making that up. I know that was a real thing.
Well, I would expect that if we have that prohibition, our engineer would have told me that. I don't, I don't know the answer to your question, but I would expect that the engineer would know.
Okay, would you ask him next time y'all start talking? Ask him if that kind of, not, maybe not prohibition, but I know that was a real thing because we were having well trouble. This was fifteen or so years ago, and.
I know, I know they've gotten.
Said no city could dig new wells. You had to use the ones you had. And then once one of them conked out on you, you had to tap into the local water provider.
Well, let me just say this. If we have an engineer who doesn't know that's the law, when I ask him to give me a quote on how much it's gonna cost to drill a new well, then I think we would need to get a new engineer.
Okay, so humor me, please.
I will ask that directly.
Thank you. I just want to.
I will ask that question.
I just want to make sure that we hear from the engineer that that kind of a law is no longer a thing.
I will ask, I will ask the question and report back next week.
Thank you. And not to mention, you know, before this gets started, if we don't get grants and stuff, where will we be getting any money? That's a very good question. Because our coffers are getting low.
Yeah, we're, we're not gonna be able to fund this out of our current resources. So we will either have to issue bonds or get a grant. Or some combination thereof.
But we will have to know that, though, before we even start anything.
Oh, yeah. This is all preliminary. I mean, we're all in investigation mode. But we will give you all the detail when we have it.
And what kind of, these aren't gonna be like HUD homes and stuff like that, are they?
Uh, these are supposed to be, uh, hundred thousand and, uh, these are nice. According to Mike Nickletti, these are high-end residences.
A hundred thousand dollars doesn't sound like a high-end residence to me.
Well, it was higher than that, wasn't it? It was two hundred and something.
I don't know the exact dollar amount, but they're high-end.
Okay.
So any other discussion on the water well? Okay, let's go to number five, the realignment of two departments. Code and Animal Control will be placed under the police department.
We've already started the process. Uh, I know that Chief Spencer has met with the, uh, people in the animal control department and code. And we're discussing on how we're going to organize a new department. a new department that will hold both those functions as well as, um, the fire inspections. And I, I think Spencer has some good ideas about that. You wanna talk about it?
Yeah, so there's a, there's a couple of theories behind, behind making a move such as this and, and the, the primary theory is that because code enforcement, animal control, and the fire marshal's office are all enforcement division or enforcement driven, um, there is a lot of benefit for them to fall underneath the police department. Um, they'll be able to be, to be managed appropriately and we'll be able to, uh, work a little better with them on making sure that, uh, code enforcement is, is, uh, has the tools and is able to do the job appropriately. The, the thought process behind it is to take the fire marshal's office, code enforcement, and animal control and eventually, uh, merge them together into a code compliance division of the police department. Um, all three of these departments should be working very close together anyway. Um, and they kind of have, it's just, it hasn't been set up to where they can do so on a, on a common bridge and, and really work together. So it's kind of, kind of been a convoluted process, but, um, I have met with animal control officers and code enforcement and the fire marshal about it, and everybody seems to be pretty excited about the opportunity of getting to work together and, and is looking forward to the future and making things a little bit better around the city.
So they would not be up under the city manager?
Ultimately, it would still fall underneath the city manager, but they would fall underneath currently. So the way, or I'm sorry, the way it was previously is animal control fell underneath, um, Lisa, code enforcement fell underneath Jeff, and the fire marshal's office fell underneath me. Um, which the fire marshal had the greatest advantage because if somebody went into, uh, you know, raise an issue regarding any kind of enforcement action he had, he had to go through the police department and ultimately to the court. Um, now both animal control and code enforcement would have to, uh, would have that same benefit that the fire marshal's office does. So it just kind of gives them a little bit, a little bit more power and a little bit more capability to be able to go out and enforce and, and do their job.
Are any jobs being lost for this?
No, ma'am, not at all.
Okay.
Not at all. Um, as a matter of fact, I, I, I truly believe that we've got some pretty good employees there. Um, and it's just a matter of working with them and, and getting them some of the equipment that they need and being able to offer them the support that they need, uh, to, to get their jobs done. So I, I truly feel like we're gonna see some improvement there. I really do. Um.
Are they staying at city hall or are they physically moving to the police station?
Uh, as of right now, there's no physical moving happening.
Okay.
Just recording, yeah.
I don't, yeah, I don't have, I don't have any office space over here.
Well, that's what I thought.
We're, we're cramped.
Animal control used to be under the police department.
Yes, ma'am, and if you, if you look at a lot of other municipalities, it is for a couple of different reasons. One is essentially enforcement. Um, it gives them a little bit of teeth behind them having to go out and, uh, uh, do their job. Um, what we've had to do a couple of times before is our detectives would actually have to help them write warrants for animal seizures. Well, now that they have full access to work side by side with our detectives, they can make that happen anytime they need it. Uh, they're able to work side by side with their police officers to, to conduct the animal, uh, animal cruelty investigations and, and other criminal investigations that they need to have done. So it just kind of makes the process a little bit better for everybody.
Cool. Well, I'm, I'm assuming since of, on this, this, uh, city manager's report that since we're going to be approving you as assistant city manager, then everything's gonna be good.
I hope. If not, don't fire me.
Well, I'm, this, well, that will be on our next meeting, right, for the approval?
Yes, it will.
City manager.
Okay, so who will be the, who will, uh, replace, who will take your place?
Uh, as far, take my place? Nobody. Um, I would still be serving both roles. I've got phenomenal, uh.
Well, I mean, for now, but I mean, I'm pretty sure you, you already have an idea of who will be replacing you.
And please, please don't, don't take this as rude, Miss Allen, uh, but that's probably something that we would have to or that council would have to discuss in, in executive session. I don't think that's something we can discuss in open session.
Yeah, and it's not really on the agenda, so we probably don't need to be talking about it.
It's not, it will, it'll be on the next one though, right? For his, uh, for his approval for this, for the assistant city manager position? Should be.
Yes.
Okay. So, I mean, it is gonna be on the next meeting, correct, Mr. Gunnison?
Yes, it will be.
Okay. All right, uh, let's move on down to number six, update on engine nineteen.
All right, I am very sorry. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen with you. Please don't shoot the messenger. We had originally anticipated, if you recall, when we had the maintenance problems with engine nineteen, we had anticipated that those initial costs were gonna be between fifty and sixty thousand dollars to repair that engine. Uh, that apparatus was sent to Cummins and we were very excited to learn that it's only gonna cost us ten thousand dollars to get that motor fixed. Then it went back to Metro and they conducted their safety inspection on it and they found multiple life safety issues on the apparatus, which are gonna cost a significant amount of money to get corrected. Um, let me scroll down here. There are, um, this cost does include the replacement of the motor. Uh, however, one of the, and I wish I could move this. Um, we received two quotes. This first one is for a total of thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixty-one cents. This will cover, um, some of the issues that we had come up were things like air fittings for the brakes, uh, leaky hubs on the tires. Um, we had, uh, airlines that were busted. We had a bunch of valves that were busted. Um, all of our tires are well below the, uh, the appropriate tread on them. So we, we've got a lot of life safety issues that when they did their inspection, would not pass their inspection. Um, Metro has expressed that they have some concern if these repairs are not made of even releasing the truck back to us because of the liability that they would hold. Um, this is the cheap end, the expensive end, uh, because there are some other cosmetic style issues that were on there, um, which aren't truly life safety issues. And I thought I scanned it in, but maybe I didn't. I did not. Um, the other quote came in at just under forty-two thousand dollars. Um, so what I'm gonna be asking council next week to consider is which route you would like me to go. Obviously, it would be my recommendation to go ahead and, and approve the forty-two thousand dollars for the repairs. And I know that is detrimental, but however, it still does come in uh, at a less total value than what we expected. The benefit to that is, is our engine is getting a, a little up in age. Uh, we're well over ten years old on our, on that apparatus. And very similar to how enterprise works, I think we should be taking that same philosophy and applying it to our fire apparatuses. Um, that fire apparatus right now could be worth somewhere in the ballpark of two hundred thousand dollars. Well, instead of holding on to that apparatus and watching the depreciation continue as we continue to fork up money for repairs, I would like to see us, uh, in the future, sell that truck and roll the value of that truck into the purchase of a new truck. So we see less maintenance cost and, and get more life out of a fire truck. Um, the downside is, is, is if we hold on to this truck, we're gonna wind up pretty much driving the truck until it's just not worth anything anymore and it's, I don't think that's a good fiscal decision to, to make. Um, so with that, um, we have already kind of started research on, on different prices of different apparatuses and, and what route to go. Uh, we'll include that in a CIP to, to have, uh, recommendations for you to consider. Um, either this budget or the next budget. So we're starting that research now and, and I just kind of wanted to give you an early heads up on a long-term goal here would be to sell that apparatus while it still has value left to it, to roll the value of that truck into the expense of a new apparatus. Any questions?
Now, the, the forty-two thousand, that includes the ten thousand for the motor repair?
Both of these quotes include the ten thousand dollars for the motor repair.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. That was gonna be my question.
I'm sorry. I wish I had better knew. I was really excited to share that news with you last week and we got this news this week and it wasn't good.
So you think it, it, it has another year left on it?
Well, that, that's kind of a loaded question. It depends on how much money city council would like to spend on maintenance of the truck. It could have ten more years on it, but we could wind up spending another fifty or sixty grand on it a couple of years from now with the age of the vehicle. Um, if we start having other issues, uh, aside from what they're gonna fix now, we could, we could be looking at another massive bill. And, uh, that's what I want to try to avoid by keeping us in, in a newer fleet and utilizing what we have now as a resource for an asset to roll back into the purchase of a new fleet. I think that will help us in the long run on capital expenditures and really help keep the cost low.
And how old is this, this engine?
I believe. I believe it's, uh, close to twelve years old. It's a two thousand seven, if I'm correct, two thousand seven or two thousand nine, but it's, it's roughly ten to twelve years old.
Your paperwork said two thousand nine. I guess probably when it went surface, so.
That may have been.
Yeah.
We just got, oh, yeah, I was just gonna say, we just got this quote in, uh, with, with the difference between fixing everything versus fixing just life safety issues. I will make sure that both of these quotes are, uh, uh, sent over to Mindy so she can include them in your council packet next week. And I would just ask that, that council make a decision on, on how you would like us to proceed on, on repairing that engine, if at all.
Oh, we, do we still have a loner? Right now?
We don't have a loner, so, uh, we, since we are a part of Tarrant County Emergency Services District, we have asked the ESD for permission to utilize our tanker as our first out apparatus. Uh, that tanker is probably twice the age of our engine, so it's not the, it's, it's not in the best shape and, and it has a lot of mechanical issues on its own. Um, we have, as of today, we started having more mechanical issues with it. Um, so my, my worry is that, uh, if this truck doesn't last us a few more weeks, we're gonna be without an engine at all. And at that point, I will have to look at obtaining some sort of rental or loner from somebody for us to be able to perform fire suppression efforts. But I will, I will address that as, as we come to it, if we come to it, and I will make sure to keep you informed of that.
You guys are hard on fire trucks.
We try really, you know, there's an old saying, if, if, if nobody else can break it, give it to a fireman, and I'm sure they could. That's just what they do.
Whoops. They're doing their job.
Okay, any other discussion?
No.
Okay, we're gonna go to mayor's report. I don't have anything currently. Uh, we're gonna drop down to citizens' comments. Mindy, have you received anything?
And I haven't received any calls either, so.
I've got one last thing before we get off.
Hold on a second. Mindy, do you have any citizens' comments?
No.
Okay, go ahead, Susan.
Uh, back on the drive-through, I've driven by, passed on by, um, how much money did we spend on that?
Very little, to be quite honest with you. A lot of the equipment was stuff that we already had, um, in the shop. Kurt did a phenomenal job at going out and seeing what we had laying around. Uh, we actually had a bunch of insulation and a bunch of plywood and two-by-fours that they were able to construct most of that with. Uh, the security camera was donated. Um, I, I, we, the biggest expense associated to that would be the electrical outlets that were added, but, but that's not gonna be anything earth-shattering. And the one thing to consider on the expenses associated with that is because we are having to add the drive-through due to COVID-nineteen, that as a recoverable expense, up to seventy-five percent from FEMA. So we are including those expenses in our report to FEMA to hopefully recover up to seventy-five percent of that, that cost.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, uh, we don't have anything for executive session, but I want everybody to hold on, cause we're gonna, Craig's gonna go ahead and put us in executive session, just to make sure that our system and everything works and it'll be, uh, available to us next week. So he's gonna put us in another room, the council members. And, uh, so everybody just hold on, let's, let's let Craig do his thing, so.
So it's gonna prompt you, uh, as I, as I go to add you to a breakout room, it's going to prompt you, uh, to just join the different breakout rooms. So if you would accept it whenever you get that prompt, and then when it comes time to end the executive session, it'll also prompt you to join back to the main session.
And Linda, you'll be losing audio, so.
I don't, I don't think she will. I think she'll, I think she'll stay, stay the same.
Okay, I thought she was on her phone.
She is, but I've linked them together on my end, so she should be okay.
Okay, well, do your thing, Craig.
Hey, you should have a notification to join you to breakout room.